Good evening. And welcome to the June 3, 2025 Business Meeting of your Ashland City Council. Councilor Bloom will offer the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mayor. We acknowledge and honor the Aboriginal people on whose ancestral homelands we work, the Kierakutsum Band of the Shasta Nation, as well as the diverse and vibrant native communities who make their home here today. We honor the first stewards in the Rogue Valley and the lands we love and depend on. Tribes with ancestral lands in and surrounding the geography of the Ashland watershed include the original past, present, and future indigenous inhabitants of the Shasta, Takelma, and Athabaskan people. We also recognize and acknowledge the Shasta Village of Kwakwaka, where the crow lights that is now the Ashland City Plaza.
Thank you. And Councilor Kaplan will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, in two thousand nine hundred and two thousand seven hundred and forty six, one nation under our individual liberties and justice.
Roll call, please, Alyssa. Dale.
Here.
Bloom.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Kaplan.
Here.
Duquesne.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
We have several mayor's announcements this evening. The first is that if you are here this evening and you would like to speak to us, the way to sign up is to take one of those forms from that tray, fill it out, and give it to Alyssa. And make sure that you do that before the beginning of the agenda item that you have come to speak about. If you are here to speak with us about something that is not on the agenda, make sure that you indicate on the form that you are here for public forum. Otherwise, please make sure that it is clear which agenda item you would like to use to address the council. I would like to offer a proclamation in honor of Flag Day 2025. Whereas the first official flag of the United States was adopted on June 14, 1777 by an act of Congress, and whereas on August 3, 1949, Congress designated National Flag Day, which was to be celebrated on June 14 of each year, and whereas the annual event is an opportunity to learn more about the history of the American flag and to honor and show respect for our veterans who have served our country with courage under this flag, and whereas the American flag has always stood for the aspirational goal that our nation will be a place where people of all backgrounds, creeds, and philosophies support and defend the Constitution as the bedrock of our democracy, and all people are guaranteed due process in a system dedicated to the rule of law, and whereas our nation is currently engaged in a vigorous society-wide debate about whether those values remain the values of our nation. Now therefore, I, Tanya Graham, Mayor of the City of Ashland, Oregon, do hereby proclaim June 14, 2025, as Flag Day in the City of Ashland, and urge all residents to contemplate what they can do to ensure that our flag symbolizes our devotion to freedom, equal rights for all, and the rule of law here and abroad, and then to act peacefully on those contemplations. We are better together. We will be having our next Coffee and Conversations on June 17 from 1:00 to 2:30 at Railroad Park. It is a time for you to come out and talk with your city staff and councilors, council members, about whatever is on your mind at the city. It's an unstructured time, so come out and enjoy a cup of coffee on us and let us know what you're thinking. The final item in this section of the agenda this evening is a remembrance of Mayor John Stromberg. Mayor Stromberg passed away just before the holiday weekend, and I wanted to offer some words today before we get into the meat of the agenda. When I joined the council, Mayor Stromberg was sitting in this seat, and one of the things that I immediately noticed about him was his kindness and the feeling he had about the work of this body, how he reached out immediately to help me get oriented to my new role, and how he worked very hard to help me understand some of the things that were already in play, that I was stepping into midstream, so that I could do my work and be effective. And what I've seen in our community since his passing is that my experience is not very different from everyone else's. He was a kind person. He was a thoughtful person, and he had a huge heart for our town. He loved Ashland. He was our biggest fan. And his legacy lives on in the good work that we continue to do in the Ashland watershed that protects our community and serves as a model for many other communities that are facing accelerating wildfire risk. So in his honor this evening, it seems appropriate in this council chamber where he did so much of his good work for Ashland that we offer a moment of silence. So please join me in that. We are now to approval of minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes? The floor is open for a motion. Councilor Bloom?
Yeah, I move approval of the May 19 study session, May 20 Business Meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please, Alyssa. Dale.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Duquesne.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
And we are to the consent agenda. Are there any items that councillors would like to pull?
Item D, please, Mayor.
Item which one?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Item D.
D. Any others? Councilor Duquesne?
Item C for clarification.
Okay.
Clarity.
All right. We will now, the floor is open for a motion regarding the remaining items on the consent agenda. Councilor Bloom?
Yeah, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Do you need to, you need to identify the two that we've pulled?
Oh, I'm sorry. I move approval of consent agenda items A, B, and E, and F, and G. There's a lot on there.
Is there a second? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Dale.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Duquesne.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
So we have a number of items that are time-sensitive this evening on our agenda. We have a place on the agenda a bit later on to take up any consent agenda items that were lifted. Is there one of these that is also particularly time-sensitive?
We will place it under unfinished business.
Yes.
Tonight. And we should make it through to then.
Yes. All right. So we are now to special presentations. ODFW special presentation this evening. Are they here? Oh, there we are. Yeah, sure, come on, come on up to the front here. And for those who are not familiar with ODFW, we're trying to avoid our acronyms. It's the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Graham, councillors. My name is Dan Van.
Dan, if you can get, pull that microphone into you a little bit closer. Perfect.
Thank you. My name is Dan Van Dyke. I am the district fish biologist for the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. I'm also a resident of Ashland, so I'm actually wearing two proverbial hats tonight, if you will. I'm here to talk briefly about Ashland's role in stewarding the future of Bear Creek and the salmon and steelhead that live in Bear Creek. I'm also going to be discussing Ashland's primary regulatory authority to protect salmon habitat, both encouraging protection as well as recommending some improvements to those To be sure, Bear Creek is heavily impacted by development. So Bear Creek is the most urbanized stream on the coast, among all the coastal watersheds in Oregon. We have more people living in this watershed than live in any of the coastal counties in Oregon. Despite that, all the fish that are native to Bear Creek persist to Bear Creek to this day. And to me, somebody in my role, that is really exciting. I think, you know, we inherited this resource. We have a responsibility to pass this resource on to future generations, and we still have those pieces in place. So Ashland is home to several native fish species, including fall Chinook salmon, Coho salmon, and both summer and winter steelhead. Just a quick update briefly on those fish, fall Chinook have actually increased in numbers since the 1970s. Some dam removal projects have helped. I think the update to the Ashland wastewater plant helped, and the riparian vegetation that came with the Bear Creek Greenway helped over time. So fall Chinook are up, Coho salmon are persisting. They're hanging on barely in Bear Creek. We'll see them here and there. Actually, Ashland Creek is one of the places where we will, we will catch Coho when we do some of our fish trapping. They are federally listed as threatened. I think they're doing much better in other parts of the watershed, less so in this urban watershed. And steelhead are broadly distributed. That photo there is actually a steelhead that was spawning this year in Ashland Creek. And in our survey, based on the number of nests or reds that we counted, there were at least 15,000, excuse me, steelhead eggs incubating in Ashland Creek alone, just in that survey reach. So steelhead are probably the most abundant fish in the Ashland area, and steelhead are rainbow trout that migrate to sea after one to three years in fresh water and then come back from the ocean as adults, typically averaging four to maybe 15 pounds in size. Juvenile steelhead can be found in any stream, at least seasonally in our area. The photo here is actually a steelhead that I collected in Ashland Creek near the Water Street Bridge. There was a construction project, just a gorgeous fish. Steelhead, like salmon, thrive in cool water, and they actually prefer and thrive in temperatures in the 55 to 64 degree range, definitely prefer under 65. So I can tell you, when it's hot for us, when it's 90 to 100 degrees, it is hot for salmon and steelhead. And young steelhead need to survive as many as three summers before they go to sea. So that just tells you how dependent they are on our stewardship of streams and stream habitat to make it and to persist. There's actually a little bit of a spiral here. I'll just mention quickly, not only are warmth temperatures not good for salmon and steelhead, but people over time have introduced species into the watershed illegally, and most of those fish thrive in warmer water temperatures. So redside chiner is being one. They actually outcompete steelhead for habitat in streams when the water's warm. Well, now you throw in climate projections, increasingly warm temperatures in our area, well, that's not only going to be bad news for salmon and steelhead, but it also favors these fish that competes with salmon and steelheads. So it's a little bit of a spiral that, all that says to me is, we don't have time for oops. We need to act and protect. Enter riparian vegetation. This is just the native trees and shrubs along streams. Extremely important, and they provide a whole, riparian vegetation provides a whole lot of benefits to different resources. Shade being one of the most critical, like we just talked about, without shade, streams will, temperatures will skyrocket. I'll mention a couple others. Riparian vegetation also reduces erosion. One of the other climate projections is we will have increasingly large flood events. If we don't have healthy intact riparian vegetation, we're going to be losing a whole lot of land, and landowners are not going to be happy. Riparian vegetation exceedingly critical for wildlife, and of course, I forgot my information on the number of birds that are counted on the Bear Creek Greenway by Rogue Valley Audubon, but we can provide that if interested. Very important for wildlife as well. The only protection for riparian vegetation comes from Oregon's land use law. That's the only real protection. And this is some of that information. So cities and counties enforce and implement land use law in Oregon, and that includes the riparian ordinance. Ordinances typically specify two things. One, a development setback from streams, and the distance is typically 50 feet, especially if it's a fish-bearing waterway. So 50-foot setback or development is not allowed, typically measured from the top of bank. Now, some impact is allowed for part of that distance if planting is done to mitigate some of that, that impact, some of that damage. And finally, the vegetation in that area is, is also protected. Again, that's a city and county regulatory authority. Me at Oregon Fish and Wildlife, I have no ability to stop anyone from removing trees and shrubs from streams. I certainly can ask, and ODFW does ask, because we get often the calls from concerned members of the public. Fast forward to recent years, there have been a couple of problems with riparian areas in the city of Ashland. And this is one in the photo here. This is Lower Kitchen Creek, which is right across Riverwalk Park. So Lower Kitchen Creek was cleared extensively several years ago, just in time for the heat dome. Not good as far as stream temperatures go. I've been working with several organizations, Rogue Valley Audubon, Southern Oregon Land Conservancy, Riverkeeper, trying to brainstorm ways, not only in Ashland, but, but elsewhere in the watershed, ways we can improve riparian stewardship, riparian ordinance protection. We actually did review the Ashland ordinance. We actually have some ideas for strengthening that, the language in the ordinance. We then met with community development. We met with Mr. Goldman and Mr. Severson to talk about some potential improvements. We understand that a wholesale change to the ordinance is something that staff doesn't think is feasible in the near term, but there are some potential improvements that I'll bring up here in just a moment. And that moment is now. So I'm here to recommend a multi-story canopy of native trees and native shrubs. That is critical. That's the goal, and that requires enforcement. I think at one point on your agenda, you're going to be talking maybe about some of the planting being done at Riverwalk Park, if that's still on the agenda. You can plant trees and shrubs, which is great, but if they're not protected, you won't get that multi-story canopy, you won't grow tall trees, you won't grow trees that, that die, because actually dead trees are valuable as well for wildlife habitat and when they fall into streams and provide fish habitat. Fostering that multi-story canopy requires enforcement, and I'm just here to plead, beg, encourage you to, to make sure that's, that's something that the city does. Number two, strengthening the ordinance. We think, talking with staff, that there is some language used in, say, county ordinances that could be of value without involving an extensive long-term review process. And a lot of that involves simple language that relates to if there's a code violation on a parcel, no new development permits are issued until that code violation is resolved. And that's, I have some language in Josephine County that we passed on to Mr. Goldman and Mr. Severson. That alone could be something, at least is, is a tool and toolkit to help if, if cities trying to, to make something happen with, with riparian clearing and it just isn't working. We would also encourage just some simple mitigation and landscape plans be fostered by the city. I know staff mentioned a lot of times that landowners have to hire consultants to help develop these plans. It's, it's, that's not necessary. That doesn't happen with county ordinance implementation. Finally, some of the language in the city ordinance does tend to pose and present the city as, and the rules as advisory. I would like to change that. Again, the staff doesn't think that a wholesale change is, is workable, but just even using the term "staff advisors," I thought was, it's not advice. This is truly an enforcement or an ordinance to be enforced. Number three, I would encourage the city to learn to live with beavers. One of the benefits of riparian vegetation, of course, is that's food for beavers. Ashland is doing a pretty good job. We have beaver dams in several areas in Bear Creek and Ashland Creek in recent years. Kitchen Creek, the one that was cleared. When I first walked out on Kitchen Creek many years ago, there were beaver dams in the creek. No beaver dams now, because there's no vegetation, no food. And finally, just encourage the city to lead the valley in stewardship, because Ashland truly is the headwaters of Bear Creek, how Ashland fosters streams, how Ashland protects fish habitat. What Ashland does is going to be the primary driver for the continued progress and the future of Bear Creek. So I just want to sneak that in there. It's something to pass along to future generations, the resource that will be inherited. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Are there questions? We have some time for questions. Councilor Hanson.
Dan, thank you for the presentation. That was really nice. I remember walking up Ashland Creek several years ago and seeing a river otter in the creek, and my kiddo asked me, what are river otter doing up here? Well, they're eating, you know? So that's great. We still have that. We can, we can be down in the creek with, with the fish. I'm curious, you said that there are some improvements that were made at the wastewater treatment plant, and I assume you're talking about the Freshwater Trust planting of the riparian zone? And I'm curious if you could speak to that, how that improved things, and, and let us know if there's anything on, on the construction list that is coming up that's also going to help improve fish habitat and water quality in lower temperatures?
Actually, Councilor Hanson, I was thinking much farther back when Ashland did its first upgrade of the plant, instead of moving it to Medford, and I think this was in the 90s, if I remember correctly. I think that alone, a friend of mine did a habitat survey on Bear Creek. I think Bear Creek in the 90s, that was the low point for the health of this stream in this watershed. A friend of mine did the habitat survey back then. When I asked him about it, the first thing out of his mouth was yuck. He said that Lower Bear Creek reeked like sewage and that there were huge carp swimming around the creek. I can tell you from somebody who spends time on Bear Creek, Lower Bear Creek does not smell like sewage anymore, and there are no carp, big carp swimming around such that you'd actually see them in sufficient numbers. That's a sign of improvement. That's the type of work. And now, of course, with the water quality trading the city is doing, that will provide additional benefits to, by improving riparian habitat, you know, throughout Bear Creek. I think most of the planting is happening in Bear Creek, if I remember correctly. So that will, over time, provide additional benefits. We just have to make sure that vegetation is protected as it, as it matures, which is the reason for this talk.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Councilor Kaplan?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Dan. Great presentation and great focus on the riparian zone, which is super important for, obviously, ODFW's mandate. Thinking about some of the things that you said at the beginning, though, and what you just said about Bear Creek kind of reeking in the, in the past, and just thinking about the sources of pollution for Bear Creek. Do you have a sense, I don't know if this is something that you, that you all do or is really more in the purview of DEQ, but with the, and I know that we have, you know, NPDES, temperature goals that we're trying to maintain, and you talked about temperature a lot, but what about other water quality parameters? Do you have a sense of whether we're doing a good job with point sources for pollution in Bear Creek and non-point sources, because that would be obviously quite different? Is that something that's in your purview or is really, am I barking up the wrong agency?
Yeah. Councilor Kaplan, that definitely is DEQ's bailiwick, but we certainly work with DEQ and, and of course, have cross purposes in us wanting, you know, to foster the health of the fish that, that live in the creek and wildlife. I actually think that the point source, point sources in the watersheds and around the country, that issue, I think, has really been well-managed over time. I hope it continues to be well-managed. So no, I think that's good. I think now it's just the issue that we have 200,000-plus people living in the watershed. Not everybody reads a label. Not everybody cares about a label with pesticides, with herbicides, with fertilizers. That's where I worry a little bit. We just have to account for, for the fact that we are a well-populated watershed here in Bear Creek. I, I'm not as knowledgeable as Bill Myers at DEQ on, on the details of Bear Creek and the TMDL progress. I can tell you that riparian protection we're talking about now is, is part of all that that the cities do to meet TMDL requirements. I can just speak to kind of a gross scale, the fish observations that we have. And in the 1990s, a survey was done in late summer, and no native fish were found in the lower 12 miles of Bear Creek, in, in the spots that were surveyed, in the lower 12 miles of Bear Creek. None. It was all black croppy and redside chiners, not native here. Fast forward since 2011, we've been surveying most years since 2011, and we find native fish in the lower 12 miles of Bear Creek. That's a gross observation. That doesn't provide details on what the pesticide levels are, or E. coli levels, or what have you. I can just tell you that that's an example of why I say the worst days for Bear Creek are in the past, if we can keep progress going.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Very good.
So we have a couple of folks who have signed up to speak, but before we have you go, Dan, I had a quick question, and that is, you mentioned that there are some recommendations for some simple adjustments to the riparian ordinance. Is that something that you can send out to our council?
Certainly.
Thank you. And thank you for your presentation. We've had three people sign up to speak on this topic this evening. What you'll do is come up to this microphone and podium over here to the side. There's a light signal there that'll let you know when you're getting close to the end of your time, and the machine will make a chime at 20 seconds. Each person, because we are, we are not making a decision on this eve, this evening, it's a special presentation, each person will have two minutes. And the people who have signed up to speak are Jake Crawford, Rick Gar? You know who you are, Rick. And Francis O'Young. So please come up in that order, and you can, you can line up there if you'd like. Please tell us your name and the city in which you reside before you get started, and you'll have two minutes. Once you, when you start talking is when your two minutes will start. Remember, you have, there's a little chime when you have 20 seconds left. Go ahead.
Is it on?
It is.
Hey, greetings, Ashland City Council. My name is Jake Crawford. Thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight. I'm a 14-year resident of Ashland, and my wife and I have the good fortune of living within close walking proximity and easy access to Bear Creek along a primitive trail that makes its way up to North Mountain Park. And I just want to echo what Dan said. I'm concerned as a citizen here about what I've seen for riparian changes, particularly along that area, and what it means for the salmon and steelhead that we're so fortunate to have swimming back up to Ashland. They're depleted across most of their range, and the fact that I can walk down there and see actively spawning fish, juvenile fish, is really important for this area. I can't stress enough how, how much water temperature is important to the survival of these fish, and the riparian area is critical to providing that shade. I mean, there's a lot of factors in there, but for salmon and steelhead that will spend two to three years as juveniles, water temperature affects every part of their life, and they're getting in the, they're living in our streams, living here in our backwaters. in the, they're living in our streams, living here in our backwaters. Their metabolism is affected by that. Their ability to withstand predation by other non-native predators and native predators is affected by it. And the loss that I've seen along that area is dramatic over the last few years. And so what I would ask the council is to understand whether or not the existing protections are there that are adequate, or to make changes. I just want to make one real comment to what you said about the habitat restoration that is happening down there, because it's, it's really striking when you're walking on River Left and you can see the work that's been done by the city of Ashland, paying the freshwater trust as part of the Clean Water Agreement to meet our wastewater treatment plants. And literally across the same stretch of river, there's no riparian protections that were your, that were there not too long ago. So on one side, we're paying for this, and on the other side, we're not enforcing the loss of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rick Grau, and I am the Conservation Chair for the Rogue Fly Fishers. And we're an organization of about 150 members, formed in 1971. And the purpose of our club, it goes beyond just fishing. We're also stewards of the environment. And we want to see that preserved and protected for future generations. And so I'm not a resident of Ashland. I actually live downstream and participate in fishing downstream in the river, in the Rogue River, where many of us do a lot of fishing down there. And, but what happens upstream in Ashland, as Dan described, affects us downstream very much. So we have two habitats for these fish. We have the rivers, we have the ocean. And both are important. It's a lot easier to do work up here on the land than it is out in the ocean. There's many complexities out there, but we do what we can. And I'm really glad to see that the habitat improvements that are going on are actually making the differences. But if you talk to any fishermen, you'll probably hear, fishing's not what it used to be, right? You know, and the numbers are way down, and we're trying to protect what we have. So I'm here in support for Dan. He's a great champion for the resources that we have. And I just want to let you know that the fishing community is behind these recommendations that Dan has suggested. And I could see, you know, reading your ordinances, that you guys do a great job already. You care. The city cares about its natural resources and about impending impacts from climate change. And I think this is one way that you could continue in those great efforts that you're already doing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Frances O'Young. I am the Rogue Riverkeeper Program Manager at the Klamasiskew Island Center, which is based in Ashland, Oregon. I'm a resident of Medford. And I've been working on water and watersheds since the late 90s. And I want to thank you, Mayor Graham, for having a moment for Mayor Stromberg, because I worked with him closely on some of the riparian work and appreciated his intention and belief about protecting waters and watersheds. And I think you all understand that this is an important thing to all residents. If you go up to most Ashland residents and say, "Do you think salmon should still be able to live in Bear Creek? Steelheads should still be able to come up Ashland Creek?" They would say yes. And so it's often easy to separate how development ordinances affect that, because it is a complex system of providing what fish need. But I did want to provide support into making, having an enforceable functional ordinance, because it's really on the ground where these things happen. And it's certainly not just Ashland. My work goes up and down Bear Creek and in the other tributaries of the Rogue as well, to encourage individuals and agencies and jurisdictions to protect the functional floodplain, because that's where filtration, shading, and all the things that, there's a lot of benefits to that riparian area. And to Counselor Kaplan's point, if, yes, it's not just temperature on the TMDL, but other nutrients and other things that are a part of overall water quality protection. And as Jake said, to have the city paying millions to TFD to shade and then allowing development to, to cut down shade, it's just nuts, right? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We are now to public forum. We have one person, one person who has signed up for public forum. So you will have three minutes. Eric Novikis?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. I'd like to begin by fully apologizing for my response to the police chief. It was inappropriate. I'm a human being, and being called a racist can be very triggering. My father was a naval pilot. He was transferred around the country. I went to junior high in Slido, Louisiana, St. Tammany Junior High School in St. Tammany Parish. The school was predominantly black, in the middle of a poor, black neighborhood. People were living in dilapidated wood structures without paint. At that time, my dad was a hobbyist beekeeper, and I gave a science presentation in my class about beekeeping and showed various beekeeping equipment. The toughest kid in the school came up to me afterward and said he was going to be a beekeeper when he grew up. From then on, we were good friends. And as a red-haired head with glasses, acne, I was prone to get picked on in school. He always stood up for me, and my standing among my peers changed as a result. In Louisiana schools, corporal punishment was allowed. Most teachers had a paddle on the wall behind their desk. My friend wasn't always well behaved. In that same science class, I watched our teacher bring this 13-year-old black child to the front of the class, stand him on a chair, drop his pants to bear skin, beat him five or six times with a paddle until it broke. That image of my friend, who'd always stood up for me, being beaten before the class, has stood with me my entire life. It has formed my sense of social justice and has demanded that I speak against injustice. I feel deeply that your laws of exclusion continue a history of injustice towards poor and disenfranchised people, and I will continue to speak out. Thank you.
Thank you. We are to the public hearing section of our evening tonight. The first one is the biennium budget adoption and approval of other related budget resolutions.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So before you all is the biennium 2025 to 2027 budget. And I want to say a thank you to our Citizens' Budget Committee and to you all as council, who have been going through this process over the past month. And I do want to highlight for you all, the changes to this version of the budget compared to what was passed and recommended by the Citizens' Budget Committee, and that is the source of the childcare grant funds that was supported by council via motion. And so that is the budget before you all for adoption, as well as the resolutions that accompany the budget that make sure that we can levy taxes and receive shared state revenues. So we are looking for a motion tonight to approve all four of the resolutions, as pointed out in the staff report provided.
Are there any questions of staff? And I think we can take this, that presentation down?
Yes.
There we go. Any questions of staff? Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to you very much for bringing this forward. Mary Ann, I was curious if you could go over the discrepancy in those two numbers that we emailed about?
Sure.
Between the resolution and what Citizen Budget Committee, just in case anybody else noticed?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Mary Ann Berry, Finance Director and Deputy Finance Director of Brent Morrison. The Citizen Budget Committee had approved a budget of 374.16 million. That included 1.5 million that would come from the parks fee, and then ended an additional 235,000 that would be appropriated for childcare grants. The thought was, at that time, that it would be coming from the reserve fund. However, in subsequent discussions, that was not to be. And so in a subsequent council meeting, we had discussed different sources for the childcare grants. And where we ended up landing was that 100,000 was going to come up, come from funds that would be freed from the parks fee, back into the general fund. 100,000 that would come from re-appropriating from the homeless budget to childcare. And then 35,000 that would come from the community development and social grants. The net effect was 135,000 decrease from that approved Citizen Budget Committee balance to what is now in the council packet, a total of 374,021,893 for the biennium 2527.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Appreciate that.
You bet. And just for folks who are watching from home, the, we have, in addition to the budget resolution, we have the other three resolutions that are part of this packet. And just very briefly, can you explain what council responsibilities are in regards to those three? Sure. Absolutely. So the first resolution is the biennial budget appropriation of what we just discussed. The second resolution, really the second through the fourth resolutions are kind of bundled together. The second is qualifying state revenues, confirming what our state services are so that we can receive those revenues. The third one is marijuana and liquor state taxes that we receive and it's appropriated in our budget. And the final resolution is to set the property tax levy. Great. And I would just note that the other two recommendations from the Budget Committee in our packet are identified as being worked on already by staff. So we'll be coming together to approve them in it so that that doesn't have to be done two years later. And also setting up that mid, mid biennial budget gathering of the Budget Committee. That's correct. So for anyone who was watching that process and is wondering where those recommendations went, those are being actively worked on, as they don't require council action at this point. Are there any further questions of staff? Counselor Duquesne?
So Mayor, we'll be making the motions separately, correct?
We can make, we can certainly make them separately. Yes. There, there, it's probably simpler to do that, and, and it'll probably move faster to do it that way. So we have it in our packet. There's, you'll, you see each one is identified, one through four, and it is perfectly appropriate to make a single motion per resolution. And if there are no additional questions, then the most, the floor is open for a motion. Counselor Dale?
Pardon me, Mayor, I will interrupt.
Go ahead.
We do want to open a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do have that. Yes. We, we have a, we need to open the public hearing. So I formally opened the public hearing. We do have one person who has signed up to speak. Alyssa, has anyone else signed us up to speak, since you brought me this? Okay. So Paul Mozina will, you can come up here to the microphone. You'll have three minutes. The chime will happen at 20 seconds, and then we will move on. And then when you're finished, when your 20 seconds is up, please finish your sentence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilors. I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you. And one of the ingredients that makes the balance, the budget balance this year is the 1.5 million that's going to come from the increase to the public safety fee, that, that resolution that you passed. And I have a real problem with the way that, that fee was communicated to the people. The city administrator made the assertion that the single role program was not covering costs as effectively as the dual role program. Talking about the cost of providing ambulance service. She said that there was less cost recovery with the single role program than there had been with the dual role program. And I was surprised by that. And I want to refresh your memory. I know you can't read it, but maybe you remember the shape of it. This is the slide that Finance Director Barry presented at the March 3rd study session, the last visit of former Chief Ralph Sartain to this body. And they presented the very successful news about the single role program. And I just want to break it down here. In 2024, at that time, the net revenue was 2.6 million. Now, and you all have said that's going to cost 1.5 million per year for the single role program. So 2.6 million minus 1.5 is 1.1 million. That's the net position, a very conservative estimate of the net position using the actual revenue for 2024 minus 1.5 million, which is supposed to be the annual cost, a net, net contribution to the general fund of 1.1 million. And so you go back to look at 2023, and what we find out is that, well, the costs aren't, they're not applicable, they're not available. Excuse me, the graph says net revenue is 2.1 million, but, but we don't know what the cost of personnel was. Well, y'all had the Public Consulting Group in here in 2020, and they did a survey looking at the 2015 through 2019 ambulance service. And in June of 2021, they presented their report. And to calculate the percent of the general fund that went to ambulance service, they took about approximately 30% of the fire department's costs, and they said, well, about 30% was for ambulance service. So if we applied that same 30% number to the, excuse me, to the cost of the fire department in 2023, we come up with over $3 million. 30% of the fire department costs in 2023 was over $3 million. That wipes out your little net revenue here of 2023, 2.1 million. So the count, the city went from a deficit in 2023 of 1.1, 1 million deficit to a 1.1 million surplus in 2024. The Chief Sartain's program, let's give credit where credit was due, that program was extremely successful. And you all are perpetuating a fraud, saying that program needs support by this public safety fee increase, when it's completely in false. The, the single role program is doing, it's paying for itself. And I really object to the way that you all have avoided presenting the evidence, supporting the idea that it's not covering the costs as well as it previously did. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I close the public hearing. If there is any further questions or discussion? Okay. Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the following resolution, 2025-17, adopting a biennium 2025-2027 budget and appropriations.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Counselor Dale?
No comment.
Counselor Boone?
Yes, thanks, thanks, Mayor. Just a brief, brief comment on this. Mary Ann talked about how we chose to, to fund the childcare program by borrowing money from the, by reallocating money, re-appropriating money from the homelessness services program. That was part of the story. The other part of the story was that in the second year, if we run out of money in the homelessness services, that we would be able to, that would be a, we would be justified at that point of tapping either contingency or reserve funding, depending upon the situation at that point. Or maybe there's other resources within the budget from unexpended budget lines that could, that could serve. So I'd just like to make sure that we put a, you know, a full, you know, we come full circle on this and put a nice point on this by, along with this, at some point, providing direction to staff to give us a report on the situation in the homelessness services program. And it strikes me that as part of the third quarter financial, third quarter fiscal 2026-27, financial report to this council, that would have taken us through the winter homelessness services expense season. And that might be a time to take a look at it and see how much money we've got left. So I'd like to offer that as direction after we, after we vote on this.
Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not support the budget. And I wrote down a few words why I don't support the budget, so I'm going to claim a little bit of time here. Some might say this is a valid budget. I say it's not sustainable or transparent. If it were transparent, we would not have been surprised by the more than double added tax hikes and new parks tax. Public safety support tax was $1.50. Now it's $5. Wildfire risk reduction was $3. Now it's $7. And we have a new added APR Ashland Parks Recs Department fee of $5, which will hit our utility bills July 1st. While on this topic, I want to note that on July 1, our water usage bill will start going up 90% over the next five years, with a doubling of the base rate and also the consumer rate, the consumer service rate. That is going to double before a drop of water is turned on in your house. Right now, it's 1333, and in five years, it can be $73 and more. The people were given no option regarding the water treatment plant. They were given a $75 million bond regarding the water treatment plant. They were given a $75 million bond and the fear of not having clean water. The people voted, and I stand with the people. My fiduciary duty as a member of this council is to find a fiscally responsible way to pay it back. We are about to borrow up to $73 million to complete this project. Our most vulnerable seniors and low income, low income families need to be protected from this huge water bill increase. That'll be necessary to pay this loan back in 35 years, over 35 years. First step, in my opinion, is to use the more than $21 million fund to start the work. That money has already been collected from water customers as a result of a series of rate increases previously. Second, in my view, the 5% food and beverage tax paid for the wastewater treatment plant, let it pay for the water treatment plant. This would result in a more equitable share of cost for the new facility, the water treatment plant. I say the food and beverage tax worked once for the people of Ashland, let it work again. Moving forward, looking at the 2025-2027 city budget, I'm a no vote because of my concerns about sustainability of this budget plan. So when I look at this, I'll be brief, moving on. When I look at this, I look at a few examples of why I feel it's not sustainable. And one is we have to hold the city accountable. No more new hires. 62% of the general fund pays for the staff salary. No more land acquisitions from parks, which gets 14% of the general fund, 25% of the food and beverage tax, and now a new $5 tax for each rate payer per month. Also, sell off unneeded land and buildings, which were acquired without thought, without much thought. Ashland needs to manage its money better and to focus on essential needs. In the coming months, I look forward to retreats with my colleagues to discuss this process of the next biennium with strategic planning and prioritizing, meeting with our budget committee, and holding open town halls, hopefully gaining trust from our constituents. The staff and the council, we have to do better and work better for the people of Ashland. I am a no vote. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
No.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Thank you. And the floor is now open for a motion regarding Resolution 18. Counsel Dale? Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Hanson.
Sure. Most of us get a crack at one of these resolutions here. Resolution, I have, I move to approve the following resolutions, number 18, certifying City of Ashland Services.
There a second?
Second.
Counsel Hanson? Counsel Dale?
Yeah, actually, I do just want to say a very quick thank you to Counsel Duquesne. I appreciate your words. And I, I too, I think this entire council really does look forward to, to meeting more regularly, to having retreats, to having open discussions and working towards that. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
And the floor is open for a motion regarding Resolution 19. Counsel Bloom?
I move to approve Resolution number 19, declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
Second.
Counsel Bloom? Counsel Duquesne? Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Dale?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
And the floor is now open for a motion regarding Resolution 20.
I guess I'll, I'll do it my turn.
I move to approve Resolution 20 to levy taxes for fiscal year 2026.
Is there a second?
Second, that one.
Counsel Kaplan? Counsel Bloom? Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Kaplan?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Counsel Kaplan?
Yes, I'd just like to ask this council to give direction to, to staff in the, in the manner that I, that I spoke before, to report next spring in the third quarter financial report, seeking our direction at that time, on whether a supplemental appropriation is warranted for the second, for homelessness services for the second year of the biennium.
And if for, are you making it as a formal motion?
I guess I make that as a motion, yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Counsel Kaplan?
No, I think I've already spoken to it. I think it's, it's our responsibility to make sure that we have the resources to complete the, the work on homelessness services if it's, if it's necessary at that time.
Counsel Bloom?
I concur.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
We move now to our second public hearing, the first reading of Ordinance 3264, creating Section 13.40 of the Ashland Municipal Code, establishing recreational immunity. And thank you both, Mary Ann and Bryn, for a job extremely well done. And I want to hand the mic to our city attorney, Johan Pita.
Great.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is the first reading of an Ordinance 3264, creating Section 1340 of the Ashland Municipal Code, establishing recreational immunity protections. Staff is requesting council to consider an ordinance to adopt municipal code language, which opts into certain recreational immunity protections, which were specified and allowed in Senate Bill 1576, and then made permanent by Senate Bill 179. This is back in 2024. So a little bit of background, Oregon has long recognized recreational immunity when someone doesn't charge for people to recreate and making their lands available for the public to use. They are entitled to a recreational immunity, preventing most tort claims acts, but based on negligence. This was originally created by the Oregon Legislature. However, in recent case laws, including primarily the Fields case, case has kind of chipped away at that. So the legislature, in response, initially responded with Senate Bill 50, 1576, which is back in March of 2024. And they extended this to public entities, adding language such as walking, running, and bicycling to the list of recreational purposes, and specified uses of trails or unimproved rights of way, which we have obviously quite a few here. Senate Bill 7, 179, then made that permanent. They originally were set to expire in January 1 of 2026. Now it's made permanent. That statute makes this automatic for cities of a population over 500,000, but requires an opt-in for municipalities under that. That opt-in is a provision that specifically addresses all those things that I mentioned. So, excuse me, immunity from liability for trails, including people who are walking and running on those trails. Most public entities that I could find have already opted in, including Medford, Bend, Oregon City, and Troutdale. Jackson County, last year, also in nearly identical language, opted in. That was in May of 2024. There is no cost to the city, no financial impacts, no direct budget impacts regarding opting into ORIS 105.668. And it could actually result in a reduction in future expenditures based on risk. So it is staff's recommendation that we move this forward to a second reading and approval.
Questions? Okay. I open the public hearing. Alyssa, has anyone signed up to speak? No. Okay. I close the public hearing. And the floor is open for a motion. Counsel Hanson?
Thanks. I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve Ordinance 36, 3264 as presented.
Counsel Hanson?
Thank you. This Fields case back in 2023 scared the heck out of municipalities and recreational users alike. What if walking on, on a, a public trail on the way to the dog park, you hurt yourself and, and we're, we're suing a municipality? The municipalities around Oregon held their breath while this was in development till we, till we found a fix. I remember Parks Department and, and other city departments just like holding their breath, hoping that we had found resolution to this so we could open up our, our spaces with high degree of confidence that, that we wouldn't be sued. So in this increasingly litigious environment that we're in, it's nice that we have recreational immunity, hopefully ironclad, and we can go out and hurt ourselves and do dumb things on trails and other fun things while we're recreating and not hold the city or any other entity accountable so, for our, our actions. So it's with this that I support this, and I thank the City of Ashland for recognizing that we have to take this step. And I encourage everybody to go out and play in the woods.
Counsel Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank our city attorney because I was surprised we hadn't opted into this earlier. So I support this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Kaplan? Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
And we are now to first reading of Ordinance 3265, adopting the 2025 Economic Opportunity Analysis. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to welcome up Brandon Goldman, our Community Development Director. And via Zoom, Elliot Weiss, our consultant from Community Attributes,
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brandon Goldman, Community Development Director. Tonight's hearing relates to the adoption of the 2025 Economic Opportunity Analysis, or EOA, as we'll refer to it this evening, through Ordinance 3265 as noted. This analysis represents really a major step in Ashland's long-range planning efforts, providing what is a clear, data-informed picture of our local economy and the land availability necessary to support economic development and employment growth over the next 20 years. The EOA was presented by Community Prepared, largely by Community Attributes, Inc., a consulting firm with deep experience in the Pacific Northwest. And we're pleased to welcome Elliot Weiss, the Project Manager for the EOA via Zoom. I also wanted to acknowledge both Chris Metford and Courtney Senna with CAI, who have worked on this project and wanted to acknowledge their efforts. I also wanted to note that this, this project was supported by a technical assistance grant from the Department of, Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. And we continue to appreciate DLCD's partnership in helping us complete such important planning documents. So from the city side, I wanted to also acknowledge the collaborative effort from Jordan Rooklin, who has assisted on this project, as well as Veronica Allen, an Associate Planner in the Planning Department, and also our GIS Division, who supplied the mapping and spatial data necessary to support the land inventory component of this analysis. So we also wanted to acknowledge the stakeholders and community members that participated in this process. In your packet, you did receive a summary of public engagement, which included a survey that we received 472 responses to from the community. And we also held a number of focus groups and interviews with stakeholders of various sectors of our economy. And ultimately, their input helped ground the analysis with real-world examples. And in doing an EOA, you start at the federal level and then look at the state economy, then regional economy. But it's important for it to be useful to Ashland to talk to local Ashland employers and the real-world conditions that they're facing. I know that Elliot's going to go into more detail, so I won't necessarily talk about what all components of an economic opportunity analysis are, other than to say that it does not establish economic goals or policy, nor change zoning. It really establishes that factual foundation and the data for future economic development discussions and decisions that the council will ultimately rely on. It also supports statewide planning goal nine, and aligns with the state rules that require cities to plan for 20 years of employment growth, which is why DLCD was cooperative in assisting on this project. And to determine that Ashland's analysis that we have an overall surplus of employment land, but looking at what mismatches in terms of parcel size, location readiness that could limit economic development in the near future. So this document, I noted, helps address the statewide planning goals. Sorry. It's not. And I'll fast forward through these so that Elliot can do his presentation. I did want to note that the, it satisfies that, provides that analysis and the factual basis, and meeting the state requirements, and providing that foundation for future decision-making. But I specifically wanted to note that the prior legislative actions included review by the Planning Commission at their May 27 public hearing. And the Planning Commission did recommend that council adopt the 2025 EOA and the implementing ordinance that's presented for you this evening. And with that, staff also concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendation. So I'll note that we're very pleased to bring this forward to you this evening. And with that, I'll turn it over to Elliot.
Thank you, Brandon, and thank you, council members, for having me, albeit virtually. I will extend my apologies. I was intending to be there in person with you this evening. I spent no less than five hours in the Denver International Airport today, trying to get on my plane to Portland with a connecting flight to Medford. And my flight out of Denver was sufficiently delayed that I would have missed my connection, and it would have made it impossible to join you in person this evening. So I'm here, but virtually. I'm going You may recall, we did meet on April 22 at a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the City Council. And so some of this content will be reviewed. I'll move quickly in the interest of time. I know you've got a relatively crowded agenda this evening, but I'm happy to pause at any point for questions. The contents of this presentation this evening are just to summarize the purpose of an EOA. Brandon has covered that to some degree, so I'll be brief. To go over some of the key findings in terms of national, regional, and local trends, that's sourced from the data analysis that we did as part of this project, to cover employment land sufficiency based on an inventory of buildable employment lands in Ashland, and to talk a little bit about both community economic development priorities and other strategic considerations, which are informed not just by the data analysis, but to Brandon's point, by engagement efforts with residents and other stakeholders. And so as far as the purpose of an EOA, it is required under state law, the technical analysis compares projected demand for employment lands, such as industrial lands or commercial lands, with the existing supply of lands zoned to accommodate those uses. And typically, an EOA is adopted as a technical appendix to the comprehensive plan. There are four key elements required of an EOA. The first is a review of national, state, regional, county, and local economic data and other market trends. The second is an identification of required site types to accommodate employment growth. The third is an inventory of industrial and other employment lands. And the fourth, that more qualitative component that I referenced just a minute ago, is an assessment of community economic development potential. And so with that, a quick summary of the national, regional, and local trends we observed in the data. In terms of population growth, Ashland grew at a similar rate between 2010 and 2024, as Jackson County as a whole, just slightly slower, but significantly slower than Medford grew. We're talking here about average annual population growth rates. And Ashland grew at about 0.5% per year during this time period, compared to about 1.2% per year in Medford, and about 0.6% per year across Jackson County. In terms of demographic characteristics, Ashland's population is older, more educated, and also more racially homogeneous, whiter than the county as a whole. 78% of households in Ashland have just one or two people, so the average household size is smaller than- household size is smaller than is true county-wide. In terms of housing tenure, households are split between homeownership and renters. And in terms of housing inventory, Ashland had just shy of 12,000 housing units in 2023, with about 60% of those as single-family detached housing units. We look at a metric that we call the jobs-to-housing units ratio. It gives an understanding of what the economic role is for Ashland relative to the region. A high ratio of jobs-to-housing units suggests that Ashland is an employment center, whereas a relatively low ratio of jobs-to-housing units would suggest that Ashland might be a little bit more of a bedroom community, or that workers who reside in Ashland are commuting to other job centers throughout the region. And indeed, the jobs-to-housing units ratio in Ashland is lower than the regional average, which is 0.85 for the two-county region, Jackson and Josephine County, and 1.08 for the state of Oregon. So Ashland's declining jobs-to-housing units ratio, 0.74, suggests that it is not an employment center for the region, relatively speaking. In terms of labor flows, 37% of Ashland's working residents work in Ashland, and others commute throughout the region, and 31% of jobs in Ashland are filled by local residents. In other words, of all the jobs that are present within the city, 31% of those people also live in Ashland. We can look at inflow in terms of workers by industry, and the top inflow industries were accommodation and food services, educational services, and retail trade. We're not presenting this data on the screen, but those jobs or those industry sectors do not always pay high wages, and so Ashland's relatively high cost of living might imply or suggest that workers within these industries have to live elsewhere and commute in in order to find affordable housing. And a couple of notes here on land use and then climate. About 17% of Ashland's land is zoned for employment uses, commercial land at 4%, industrial land at 1%, and then special districts are included in this count, including the Croman Mill District and the Healthcare Services District. There are climate hazards that we recognize in the EOA, none of which will come as a surprise to any of you, but those rated as high probability in the data and per Ashland's Hazard Mitigation Plan include wildfire, drought, air quality, extreme heat, and earthquakes.
Elliot, before we move on, we have a question.
Yes, please.
Counsel Kaplan.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Elliot. I remember when we had this joint conversation with the Planning Commission, one of the things that came up in the previous slide or in the data that was just now presented in this in this slide about jobs-to-housing balance and regional labor flows was a question about how remote work is handled, folks who work out of their home but are employed elsewhere. That, I think you said that it was would be reflected as, you know, they're not working in Ashland, but they're so they're working elsewhere. But you're going to be looking back into that a little bit more to get a little bit more texture on that, if I recall the answer to that question at that point. Did you able to look at that a little bit and just confirm that that's the that's the case? And it also would, I think, adjust a little bit, a sense that the jobs, a low jobs-to-housing balance, if a lot of it is in fact remote working, it's not quite bedroom community. It's, I don't know what it is exactly. We don't have we don't have the language for it anymore, because it's you work where you're you work in your house. Here it is, it is your bedroom, but it's also your 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 home office and everything else. So did you were you able to get some a bit more color on that?
We were. Thank you for the question, and there is some nuance there. I don't know that I can speak to it bullet point by bullet point on this slide, but the way the slide is structured, because it's referencing different data sources, and different data sources do treat this issue differently. It depends on whether the job count is by, you know, place of residence or place of employment. There are data presented in the report that would include remote workers, and so those jobs, if the company were located in another city, would go to the employer's primary address. They wouldn't be counted as Ashland jobs. But if you're talking about somebody who's in an entrepreneurial position, who's working for a company they own from home, the business address would be their home address, and it would be in Ashland and therefore counted, generally speaking. And so again, there's some variability there, source by source. We'd almost have to get into the report and go exhibit by exhibit to specify which one is and which one is not. I do believe since April 22, we added some clarifying language to the report itself to try to, you know, just be really clear about where those workers are or are not being counted. But that is the additional texture I can I can provide, at least as it pertains to this slide.
Thank you very much.
All right. I'll proceed, just touching on national trends. Unemployment fell nationally to 4.1% in 2024, and labor force participation was rebounding, but it is still lower than pre-pandemic. Again, some of these metrics hold to, I'd say, varying degrees in Ashland, but an EOA is required to sort of provide this data on national trends as macroeconomic context for the opportunities that Ashland may have in front of it. Consumer Price Index is up. That's no surprise. Inflation has been a story over the last few years. Generally, inflation is steady in the most recent months for which we have data, and the federal fund borrowing rate is at 4.3% last we checked. Interest rates have been steadier in the last couple of quarters' worth of data. In terms of regional trends, Southern Oregon's population grew about 0.9% per year or 12% total. That's a slightly different percentage than referenced on an earlier slide, but I believe it refers to a different time period here. These are middle-of-the-pack among Oregon counties in terms of growth, and we provide one exhibit here, just as a snapshot, the proportion of workers age 16 and over who work from home. Again, additional context on this remote working question. This is for Jackson County, Ashland, Medford, and the state of Oregon as a whole. You can see the green 2023 data is up significantly over the blue 2010 data, and these 2023 estimates from the U.S. Census Bureau show the highest proportion of workers working from home in Ashland with regard to these other comparison geographies. So about 21% in Ashland compared to 17% statewide and 12% countywide, Medford clocking in at the lowest proportion with 10%.
We have another question. Counsel Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Elliot. This is really intriguing, and I was wondering if you could at least, you know, combine these two slides again for us and help us better understand our community. If 21% of, well, I'll let you do those numbers for me. Could you please help us understand the job-to-housing ratio relative to the stay-at-home, work-at-home numbers?
I'm not sure I understand the question. I'd be happy to try, although it might test my ability to do a little mental math.
Sure. You said that 37% of Ashlanders work in Ashland, 31% have jobs in Ashland, and I'm curious how the work-from-home numbers are relative to those numbers. When we're trying to understand our community, our, you know, there's big buckets of categories you can put us in, you know, are we a retirement community? Are we, you know, help us with this number, that understand the significance of the 21%?
Well, I'd say it's certainly significant. I don't know that we're going to be able to square it perfectly with some of the other data presented, because they are indeed from different sources. This is from the U.S. Census Bureau's American Community Survey, which, as the name implies, is a survey that gets delivered to a certain number of households within Ashland. The Census Bureau staff use statistical methods to extrapolate, you know, an estimate with a margin for error based on the responses they get. And so it's purely based on place of residence. It would not relate back directly to the job counts that we are talking about on another slide. This is just saying that based on the data that 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 survey generates, about 21% of Ashland residents who are 16 years or older work from home. And the earlier data on inflow and outflow is from a dataset that has a pretty clunky name. It's called the Longitudinal Employer Households Dynamics Dataset, also from the Census Bureau, LEHD for short, and that gives data both by place of employment and place of residence to try to estimate inflow and outflow, but methodologically, they're not exactly the same, and therefore, they're not perfectly comparable. So I know that's not maybe a satisfying answer, but get them to match up perfectly.
Okay.
Thirty-one percent would include both remote work jobs and brick-and-mortar jobs, assuming that the remote work jobs are actually, you know, that the company's address is in that.
Okay, so to Counsel Kaplan's question, those these numbers, that 21% are already accounted for, and the 31% of Ashlanders have jobs in Ashland?
Yes.
Okay, that's enlightening. Thank you.
What I would caution is that we can't we can't necessarily do the 31% minus 21% to say that, you know, there's 10% that live here and work here but work in a brick-and-mortar location.
Thanks again.
Is it safe to say, Elliot, that at this point, given how quickly the work-from-home component came on during the pandemic, that this type of analysis is still trying to figure out how to grapple with the people who never went back to the office or or moved and took their work with them into a new place? It seems like, you know, back in the day, it was probably pretty simple. You you worked somewhere near where you lived, right, for most people? And so I think part of this is that we're going to have to figure out what what do these numbers tell us in terms of the health of our economy and where we should be focusing our energy, you know, in the as as we go through the later economic development planning process? So I appreciate the difficulty of trying to make make this very new circumstance function within our existing analytical methodologies.
Yeah, and I do think that there there are things that you can take from these data, even if you can't make the math work perfectly. I think that it's clear that, you know, the proportion of workers in Ashland, resident workers, I should clarify, that are working from home is relatively high compared to both the region and the state, so that's a significant population and one to consider in your planning. I also think that the folks who are staying home, you know, we can't do the 31% minus the 21%, but we do know that a significant portion of that 31% is working from home, even if it's not perfectly quantifiable. And so a lot of the folks who are staying to work are not working in a physical office space or a retail store or something like that. And, you know, there are insights on a planning level that I think you can still utilize there, even if they're not perfectly quantified.
Thank you.
We have a measure of industry concentration here. We call them location quotients. It's just how concentrated employment is in Ashland for that particular industry sector relative to a larger comparison geography, and then the size of the bubbles on the left are scaled to the total employment. And so you see something like ambulatory healthcare services as both being a large bubble, suggesting a high number of jobs, and something that has a relatively high location quotient, which means it is clustered. Those that sort of stand out include healthcare services, but also sporting goods manufacturing and food and beverage establishments. This is total employment by industry. I know we had some discussion on this before. Total employment in 2022 was about 9,100 jobs locally, with strengths in leisure and hospitality, retail, education, and healthcare. Private employment growth of about 500 jobs, 516 jobs between 2013 and 2023, with the fastest growth in construction. And then the employment forecast suggests that you are going to add jobs in leisure and hospitality at about 650, healthcare at about 420, and the acronym is FIRE, that's finance, insurance, and real estate, at about 160 or 170 jobs. I will just note that there are a couple of numbers in the right column, the CAGR or compound annual growth rate. Again, that's just average annual growth rate over the time period that pop out. We see public administration at 55% and educational services at 23%. A lot of that is just due to methodological changes and how they counted the data in 2010 versus 2022, and so I would not overinterpret those high growth rates represented in the table.
We have a question. Counsel Hanson.
Okay, sorry. Going to try to limit my questions, but this has really stuck on me. So our growth trends from 2013 to 23 saw the fastest growth in construction, and our forecast doesn't include construction growth. I'm just curious why why the omission in the forecast relative to the growth we've actually seen in the marketplace?
Yeah, we had some discussion around this when we met in April. It is based on a regional forecast, and we can modify that regional forecast, but the state and the state office that provides the regional forecast does not does not project that growth continuing into the future. And so the local forecast that we've developed leans heavily on that state forecast, and I think that's that's why.
Okay, interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next few slides pertain to real estate market data. Just quickly, we looked at downtown retail lease rates and vacancy rates, and in general, while lease rates have been falling, vacancy rates are quite low. They spiked immediately after the pandemic, as you might imagine, but are down to 1.6%, which is very low. In terms of office uses, lease rates also declined to about $19 from about $23 per square foot in 2021, but vacancy rates also remained extremely low at 2.5% as of 2024. Industrial trends, vacancy was actually quite high at 26.7%, but there had been new square footage delivered in 2023, 28,000 square feet, and so sometimes it just takes a little while for that space to be absorbed, and you can see spikes in those vacancy rates as that space gets absorbed. And we also included in the report data on the hospitality sector. There was a loss of rooms in terms of hotel inventory, down 123 rooms post-COVID, but occupancy rates have since recovered to pre-pandemic levels, which is great. And in terms of residential real estate, we include data on house prices and home price appreciation, as well as rates of cost burden. That's all in the report that you have received as part of your packet materials. Ashland's median home sale price, as you can imagine, has increased, as it has really across the United States. It is still below the median home sale price for the state of Oregon as a whole, but it is significantly higher than the median home sale price for Jackson County, which stands at $435,000. Ashland's is at $470,000. That is up from $220,000 in 2012, I should mention, also just down from a peak in the data in 2024 of $690,000. And so that concludes my slides on the data. I wanted to cover employment land's sufficiency. Brandon mentioned that you do have a surplus of employment land, which is great, because it means you don't need to go and find additional land to meet or match the forecast from the state's standpoint. We discussed the methodology when we met in April. We start by trying to identify the supply of lands. We compare that to demand based on the forecast and reconcile them by looking at the number of site types that you have to accommodate the different types of uses that the forecast anticipates. So it's not just enough to say, in the aggregate, we've got this many acres, and the forecast calls for fewer acres, so we're good. It actually requires us to say, okay, if the growth happens in these industry sectors, the users in these industry sectors require these types of sites and sites of these sizes, and this is how many of those you have in your employment lands inventory. And so according to the buildable lands inventory, Ashland has 181 acres of net buildable employment land, and that compares favorably to 76 acres of forecasted demand. These are the site types that we've identified. They're comp plan categor- These are the site types that we've identified. There are comp plan categories for commercial, downtown commercial, employment, chroming mill, and industrial. You've got a total of one hundred and forty vacant lots. Those are scattered across different site sizes, and those site sizes can match the needs of different types of employers. Some of the key development considerations, given the findings of the employment lands inventory, is no surprise to anyone to really look for the best possible use out of the chroming mill and railroad district sites. Those two sites alone comprise the majority of your available employment land inventory. Publicly owned land offers additional development potential, and that's something to be aware of. As part of comments that we received from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, some of those publicly owned sites were taken out of the inventory. So while they don't, they aren't included in, in that land supply that we're saying you have available to you, you could still look at things like private-public partnerships or other community-serving projects that may help to serve the community's economic development interests. And so those are opportunities to keep in mind, I think, as you move forward, even if they don't show up in the employment lands inventory. We did make some adjustments, as I just referenced, based on feedback from DLCD. I believe since we delivered the version that was in your packet, they are minor in nature, but we wanted to include a slide here to just let you know what those changes were. We made a specific reference to the proper OAR chapter. We clarified that the analysis is based on the 2024 buildable lands inventory that the city had published, and we detailed the constraints that led to some deductions from the 2024 BLI, including the exclusion of publicly owned land, which I just mentioned, and a couple of exclusions related to critical areas, including for slopes greater than thirty-five percent and land within the hundred-year floodplain. So if you notice minor changes between the draft that we currently have and the draft that was previously presented, that is simply in response to these comments from DLCD. And finally, I wanted to touch on the community economic development priorities and the strategic themes. These will be important to consider as you move forward with updates to the comprehensive plan, which is forthcoming and outside the scope of this project, but nonetheless related. Just a note on some of the engagement activities conducted. Brandon mentioned these. We did put out a regional survey that got just about five hundred responses. We were able to segment those responses, both based on where people lived and where people worked. We conducted nine different interviews and focus groups that together included dozens of participants across, you know, businesses, present locally, stakeholders, other technical experts. And we conducted an in-person student forum at SOU. We had a dozen students come and talk to us about their aspirations and where they saw Ashland meeting them or not, and what would make Ashland a candidate for the next phase of their lives as employees and graduates. Some of the things that we heard rather consistently were a desire to leverage recreation assets and diversify the tourism economy in Ashland. That means continuing to support some of the traditional anchors like OSF, while also looking at other aspects of the tourism economy for which Ashland has assets that could be better leveraged, to help provide support for businesses, and in particular, small businesses that have recently been challenged by inflation, labor availability, labor cost, and high cost of living for workers in particular, and barriers to accessing the things that make Ashland great, especially for younger and economically disadvantaged families, with cost of living being the primary barrier. Student retention was identified as an opportunity. Students want to feel more integrated in the community, and this is primarily, again, referring to students at SOU, although to some extent, I think that these are generalizable to young people in the community. We heard especially for those who didn't have a car or were under twenty-one, that they really felt rather isolated. And then a lack of high-paying jobs and limited career opportunities, according to them, deter longer-term retention, make them look elsewhere for opportunities after graduation. We heard about hurdles to development. We think that there's a perception issue primarily. We think that staff have worked really hard to make it possible to develop in Ashland and to make Ashland competitive with neighbors throughout the region in terms of attracting investment interest. But many of the folks that we spoke to who are in commercial real estate or who are invested in, in building and getting projects up and, underway in operation, still think it's, it's a little trickier to do business in Ashland, and so there's, there's maybe an opportunity there. And then certainly, investment in downtown, continued investment in downtown. And finally, strategic themes. This content is related, but we've sort of rolled it up in six identifiable things that you could take forward and keep in mind, in particular for the comprehensive plan update to the economy element. Theme one, strengthen economic resilience through diversification. Theme two, foster an inclusive, forward-looking community. Theme three, unlock the potential of local talent and institutions. Theme four, make space for business growth. Theme five, build regional partnerships to scale impact. And theme six, activate Ashland's lifestyle advantage. I will just say, you're not committed to any of these by virtue of adopting the EOA. It's simply a summary of what we heard. And we would, again, consider this an advisory document as, as something to account for when you go to proceed with your comprehensive plan update. And so in terms of next steps, this is my final slide, and then I'm happy to take additional questions or discussion. We're here tonight to present to you. We've got the recommendation from Planning Commission for adoption after we presented to Planning Commission last week on the 27th. There is a little bit of work with this project left just to fulfill all of your grant requirements with DLCD. That includes an equity and inclusion self-assessment and some specific recommendations for the economy element. And all of those materials must be complete by June 30th in order to fulfill your grant obligations. And so with that, thank you. I appreciate the time. And again, I'm happy to take any additional questions.
Questions?
Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Elliot. Brandon, appreciate this. Just wanted to kind of just put a bookend on this by kicking it over to Jordan. You are economic guru with this, so you take this. This is wonderful work. And so the question is, now what? How do we action this? So if you could briefly speak to how we're gonna, what we're gonna do now because of what we learned?
Yeah. So the next step from this is really for us to create an economic development strategy. So really, what I see this EOA as the report showing, you know, what would be our projections if we continued business as usual as the city, based on our historic trends? So the economic development strategy, the intent and purpose is to name out loud what kind of businesses we hope to attract and what kind of workers we hope to attract. And then what steps will we take to make that happen? And so those types of actions will be actually doable actions within the, you know, three- to five-year time period as well as the ten-year time period. Would love to use the strategic planning process as the way to vet that strategy with the community, to make sure that what we're seeing as staff and as the council reflects what the community is wanting. This EOA, this economic opportunity analysis, provides a very strong information basis to base that strategy on.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one, Elliot, and I, I realize it may be a very difficult one to answer, but as we see the accelerating impacts of climate change, we also see fields that are needing to adapt and change and expand in response to the risks. So when we think about things, especially around wildfire, there are whole industries now and, and focus points of economic development around being able to handle the adaptation elements for homeowners, for cities, for businesses, those sorts of folks. To what extent are those significant changes able to be integrated into an economic opportunities analysis, given that so much of how we look at projections are by backcasting and seeing where we've been and what is that trend line? So how should we think about that as we move towards that next process? How should we think about where that fits?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's a fantastic point. It, it is difficult because, you know, the, the data often don't represent those jobs, those industries. They don't have breakouts that cover that. I mean, they, they cover it in the sense that there is an umbrella category, but for the most part, you know, it's hard to figure out exactly where those land. And some of those are new and emerging and probably awaiting classification in ways that challenge an analysis that is based largely in the data. I think that the EOA itself does, it does discuss climate and climate impacts, climate threats, and the threats specifically that climate-related events can have to your local economy. I think that it is appropriate to also talk about opportunities associated with some of those threats. In other words, if there are industries that you could attract, that you could grow, if there are areas where you can innovate and lead on innovation in order to more effectively respond, then certainly that would be something I think you'd want to identify and develop an action plan for in the strategic plan that Jordan just referenced. We do that type of work, those types of strategic plans, and I think that type of a document takes that next step in terms of identifying not just goals, but tangible actions that could grow those types of jobs and make Ashland a competitor for the folks who are innovating in those spaces. So I don't know that I can tie it back to the data effectively in this moment, but I think it's absolutely an important consideration.
Great. Thank you. Mayor, I'd love to jump in on that because separate from the economic opportunities analysis on just some data analytics that I'm doing based off state-based data, in the last five years, the two largest growing businesses here locally have been, A, delivery services, so an increase in Amazon delivery jobs, and then B, an increase in resource management, which is the NAICS code really around wildfire mitigation and other mitigation work. The challenge with the mitigation work is it is seasonal, at least the jobs that have been created here locally. One thing that we're very lucky is that the state's workforce analyst actually lives here in Ashland, and so I look forward to working with him over the coming year to get more detailed into Ashland's specific job growth and job opportunities to help inform that economic development strategy.
Thank you. So if there are no additional questions, I'll open the public hearing. Alyssa, has anyone signed up to speak to us this evening on this issue?
No.
Thank you. I'll close the, the public hearing, and the floor is open for a motion. Counselor Hanson, I mean, it was Counselor Kaplan.
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance 3265, adopting the 2025 Economic Opportunities Analysis as a technical support document to the comprehensive plan economy element, and schedule second reading for June 17th, 2025.
Take it.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yeah, thanks. This was a, I very much enjoyed the, the presentation and this opportunity for discussion a few weeks ago, and we did it together with the Planning Commission. It's a really rich source of, of information and, and to really inform some of our decision-making going forward. I, I think the strategic planning process will be really benefited from, from this. I mean, I also think about how this intersects with, with finance and ability to really finance some of the things that we're, we're talking about and some creative financing structures that we might be able to take advantage of to make some changes. So thank you very much for working with us on this. Thanks to the staff and, and all the, the people who participated in public, public focus groups. Thanks.
Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would just like to also add that appreciate all of this. It's an extremely informative and useful document, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't do us any good if we don't take action, if we don't make decisions, if we don't move forward, if we don't take this and run with it. So I really look forward to, to creating actionable next steps sooner rather than later. We have the information. Now we just go out and do it.
Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to say ditto to what Counselor Dale said because this is all good, and we've been down this road before. And now that we have everything in order, I look forward to rolling up our sleeves and getting things done as well. And the sooner the better, as we all know, time is very important. So thank you, and I look forward to the second reading.
Counselor Hanson?
Yeah, I really appreciate the analysis, and I love the what, what's next question. The strategic planning, I think, will be really interesting to see further into chroming mill development and the railroad property development. You know, what do we want our future developments to look like? What kind of businesses does Ashland 10 years from now need and want and beyond? And this is great data for that kind of planning. So yes, let's roll up our sleeves and get some work done sooner rather than later.
I recall when we decided as a council that we needed to move forward with this analysis and get it into the budget, that a big part of that conversation was because there were, there were questions we needed answered in order to even have the conversation about what is next. We didn't know where we were in terms of, of a variety of these trends. And so I'm so pleased to see this and looking forward to the discussions that will follow. Thank you for your good work. Are there any other deliberations, discussions?
Roll call, please, Alyssa?
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So let's take a, a short recess. Counselors, please be back in your desks or in your chairs at 7:52.
Meeting back to order. We are now to the second reading of Ordinance 32 of ordinances, 3249, 3250, 3251, and 325063 to implement the Climate Friendly Area Overlay and Written Findings adoption.
Hello again. Brandon Goldman, Community Development Director. So presented for you this evening is the Climate Friendly Areas Second Reading, and as the mayor mentioned, it encompasses four separate ordinances. So these ordinances were reviewed at your May 6, 2025 meeting, and the council held a public hearing and approved first reading of the four ordinances that are listed. The ordinances implement the Climate Friendly Area Zones and adopt related amendments and zoning maps, site design review maps, that are in accordance with the state's Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities rules. Ordinance 3249 repeals Chapter 18.314, which is the transit triangle overlay, and replaces it with a brand-new chapter by the same number, 18.3.14 Climate Friendly Overlay. Ordinance 3250 amends the zoning map to add the Climate Friendly Overlay. Ordinance 3251 amends the Site Design Zones map to align the detailed site design review overlay with the CFA boundaries. And lastly, Ordinance 3263 amends multiple chapters within the Ashland Municipal Land Use Code in order to align with the new CFA requirements. Shown on the screen here is the two areas that are identified as climate-friendly areas through these ordinances. I would note that at first reading, the council voted move to amend Ordinance 3249 and 3263 to allow for additional building height up to 60 feet for multifamily and mixed-use developments, both within the designated CFA overlays and within the downtown zone, C1D. That amendment was when at least 25% of the dwelling units qualify as affordable housing under Ashland Municipal Code 18.25.050. Because these changes were made between first and second reading, staff can read the amended language into the record in order to ensure compliance with procedural requirements, which I'm prepared to do unless there's any questions on second reading.
Are there any questions? Okay, go ahead.
All right. So with that, Ordinance 3249, the amendment read in full, including the title. Ordinance 3249 and ordinance amending the Ashland Land Use Ordinance to repeal Chapter 13, sorry, Chapter 18.3.14 Transit Triangle Overlay and replacing it with the new Chapter 18.3.14 Climate Friendly Overlay. Exhibit A, Section 18.3.14.050. Dimensional Standards, Table 18.3.14.050 Climate Friendly Overlay Dimensional Standards. Maximum height with bonus footnote number six is amended to read "Multifamily and Mixed-Use Dwellings" meeting the standards for 25% affordable housing in Section 18.2.5.050 are eligible for bonus height. Applicants may alternatively pursue height bonuses per ORS 197A.445. The second amendment to Ordinance 3263 to be read in full. An ordinance amending chapters 18.2.1, 18.2.2, 18.2.3.130, 18.26, 18.3.12, 18.3.13, 18.4.2.040C of the Ashland Land Use Ordinance to align with the new Climate Friendly Area Regulations and ensure implementations of applicable development standards. Section 18.2.6.030 Unified Standards for Non-Residential Zones, Table 18.26.030 Standards for Non-Residential Zones. Building Height Maximum Feet is amended to read "Buildings greater than 50 feet and less than 60 feet are permitted if they contain at least 25% of the dwelling units as affordable housing, meeting the Affordable Housing Affordability Standards in 18.2.5.050 or with approval of a conditional use permit." And I will note that that second one is the portion that amends the zoning regulations for the C1D area. I note that ordinances 3250 and 3251 were unchanged by the, between first and second reading, and as such, staff has presented these amended ordinances as well as written findings for council's consideration. These actions will fulfill the requirements of the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities rules of State OAR 660-012-0315 through 330, and demonstrate compliance with statewide planning goals. As with all legislative amendments to Land Use Code, the final adopted ordinances will be forwarded to the Department of Land Conservation for Development following council approval for their review and compliance with state law. And I noted a lot about compliance with state law, but before we move on, I wanted to note that the establishment of the Climate Friendly Areas directly advances several of Ashland's adopted council goals, including fostering environmental resilience, promoting housing and livability, and supporting a diverse and resilient economy. By concentrating future growth in walkable, transit-oriented, mixed-use areas, the CFA strategy reduces vehicle miles traveled, lowers greenhouse gas emissions, and encourages a compact urban form. And all of these are really core tenants of the city's climate and sustainability objectives. Additionally, CFAs and the amendments to the mixed-use development standards, which apply citywide, support increased housing opportunities for all income levels by enabling higher-density development in concert with commercial development, and removing barriers such as residential density cap. And this aligns with the council's prior efforts to improve housing access while preserving the community's livability and natural environment. And with that, I have included the council suggested motion on a slide, again, unless there's any additional questions.
Any further questions? Okay. The floor is open for a motion. Counselor Kaplan.
Yeah, I don't do my share of motions, so I'll do this heavy lift. Okay, yeah, then I'm done for a few months. I move to approve second reading of the following ordinances. Ordinance 3249 as amended, and ordinance amending the Ashland Land Use Ordinance to repeal Chapter 18.3.14 Transit Triangle Overlay and replacing it with a new Chapter 18.3.14 Climate Friendly Overlay. Ordinance 3250, an ordinance amending the adopted zoning map to add the Climate Friendly Overlay. Ordinance 3251, an ordinance amending the adopted Site Design Zones map to align the extent of the detailed Site Design Review Overlay Zone to include the full extent of the Climate Friendly Area Overlay Zones. And Ordinance 3263 as amended, an ordinance amending chapters 18.2.1, 18.2.2, 18.2.3.130, 18.2.6, 18.3.12, 18.3.13, and 18.4.2.040.C of the Ashland Land Use Ordinance to align with the new Climate Friendly Area Regulations and ensure implementation of applicable development standards. I also move to approve the written findings as presented.
Second.
Counselor Kaplan.
Wow, this whole climate-friendly area journey was a long one, starting, gosh, was it two years ago? It seems like we've had lots and lots of meetings on the whole concept, and we narrowed down what it was and what it could be, and, you know, with assistance from consultants, and just a lot of, and the Planning Commission, of course, and just a lot of a conversation. I think we came out with a really good result here that sets up to climate-friendly areas, but also applies some of the same principles to our downtown zone, because a lot of us in our Planning Commission felt it was really important, in our community, felt it's really important to apply some of those opportunities in our downtown, in our downtown, without running the risk of some may perhaps adverse effects that, and frigidities that might be embedded in that if it were also a climate-friendly area. And the amendments that we read into it this time had to do with affordability bonus, and it was a good discussion, I think, in our first reading. I'm left a little bit with, you know, it was a good guess about the, what's the right affordability bonus that's actually going to get some affordable development. It was previously written so that it would have to be, in order to get an affordability bonus, an extra 10 feet of height, it would have, the whole building would have to be developed as affordable, and that seemed to us to be, and not realistic. So after some of the conversation, we dropped it to 25%. I don't know whether 25% is going to be enough inducement to get developers to take advantage of the additional, additional height. So I do think it's a bit of a work in progress, and we need to continue to dialogue with local developers and see, you know, what will actually work in order to define these parameters in the most effective way to actually get the affordability and not just have it on the paper. So with this, I'm happy to support this, and thank you very much to Brandon and the whole team for a long, long journey on this.
Counselor Bloom.
Yeah, thank you. I concur with a lot of what Counselor Kaplan said, and it certainly has been a process and a massive lift by your team, Brandon, and so much appreciation there. I'm happy with this moving forward. I think that, I think that it could present some really good opportunities and lessons to be learned. I think mostly positive, but even if there are some negative consequences, you know, we can, we can take something from that and improve our systems, improve our planning and zoning going forward in the rest of the community. And so any opportunity to learn more and to improve, I think, is beneficial for the community and for city government. And so, yeah, happy to support this. Thank you a lot.
Counselor Duquesne.
Thank you, Mayor. I too will support this because I look at the previous presentation of the EOA in combination with this climate-friendly area, and how in combination, I, once again, I will say that I'm looking forward to getting the job done and getting to yes and making a difference. Thank you.
Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor, and just a big nod to staff and Planning Commission. This is amazing work, and we have the state to thank for getting this going. It was quite a surprise to me, but this is, as my colleague just stated, on the heels of other developments and other insights and other resources that we're going to bring to the table, and what great timing that hopefully the railroad property and Croman will open up in the next couple of years, and signaling to developers that, you know, we want our downtown to modernize and improve yet, you know, maintain some historical significance as well. It all is just amazing. So thank you, and I look forward to using these tools and policy to changing our community, get more affordable housing, housing of all types, as well as businesses. Thank you.
Counselor Dale.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, and I just want to echo what Counselor Duquesne said about how this ties into the economic opportunities analysis, and then just reiterate what we talked about in the last agenda item, which is none of this matters unless we take action on this, unless we actually go out and do what we've just worked for two years on to be able to make this happen. So I look forward to actually seeing Brandon, you and your team, and staff, and council, and the community members, developers, everybody coming together and actually seeing this come to fruition. So thank you.
And I would just note that many of the problems that we are challenged with in this modern world come from how we developed across the landscape. And the future calls us to do things differently. And so I know there have been, there have been some grumblings around the state when the state made this bold move and said, we have to do something significantly differently. And I'm really proud that Ashland stepped up and has simply embraced it and said, yes, this is a great tool for the things that we're trying to do anyway, because we recognize that the future is calling us to be something different than we have been in the past. So thank you so much, Brandon, and thank you to all of the folks who have worked on this, and all of the people who came out and commented and helped develop this really monumental set of policies that are going to help us build the future we want here in Ashland. Roll call, please, Alyssa. Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Thank you. We are now to unfinished business, the adoption of the Assistance Program.
Thank you. I'd love to welcome up Bryn and Mary Ann from our finance team. So the resolution before you all tonight is to adopt changes to our Utility Assistance Program. These changes have been discussed at prior study sessions, but really they're looking to increase the eligibility for participation, to remove the seasonality, and to reduce some of the administrative burden on tax, on staff, pardon me. And so I would like to turn the mic over to Bryn and Mary Ann if there's anything else you'd like to add before council consideration.
I will go ahead and just further summarize that the potential changes to the Assistance Program applies to the water, electric, and sewer charges with guidance from council. We present the changes here to replace the current program and also repeal the Senior Citizen and Disabled Discount Resolution. We were not able to get the demographic and other information that was requested by council earlier, as those agencies either did not respond, or they did not have the level of detail that was being requested. As we must implement this for the start of the new budget cycle on July 1, and based on your previous guidance, the resolution before you includes the primary changes to the program. the program of implementing a proxy of SNAP or OHP to auto-qualify applicants and providing a 30% discount on water, electric, sewer with a cap of $400 annually. We will do, staff will do a mid-year reconciliation against the budget to assess if any changes should be made to the program during the biennium. And with that, unless you have any other, anything to add, open up to questions.
Questions? I know we had a big conversation when we were coming to the point of providing the guidance that has come back to us now in a resolution form. Any questions? Okay, the floor is open for a motion. Council Kaplan.
Yeah, two in a row, two in a row. This is dear, this one is near and dear to my heart, so I've been working on it for, you know, some time. So I would like, I move to adopt Resolution 2025-21 that establishes the utility discount based on income threshold qualifiers and cap in the staff report for the Utility Assistance Program effective July 1, 2025, and repeals Resolution 1992-22 on the senior citizens' utility discount.
Second.
Council Kaplan.
Yeah, thank you. This, so we've been talking about this as long as I've been on the council now, a little over two years. So thank you, and I know that's been a real heavy lift and a lot of moving parts on it for the team. So thanks for bearing with us and having multiple conversations about it, to really try to dial it in so that it can be much more generous to Ashland's low-income households than these two programs that were really, in a sense, divorced from each other and worked somewhat well together, but really weren't as effective as they could be. So these are, this new program has important modifications to our longstanding Utility Assistance Program. I didn't realize in 1992 until I read the suggested motion. It replaces both the Ashland Low-Income Energy Assistance Program and the Senior Citizen Utility Discount with a unified program that extends electric utility assistance throughout the year rather than just the four winter months. It sets an appropriate, and because that's important because now we see that there's a luxurious high peak, that we have a double peak on electric utility usage, the summer months for air conditioning in many cases. It sets an appropriate income ceiling of 200% of the federal poverty line, consistent with other safety net programs, raising it from the lower ceiling that was in place for the senior discount program. Reduces the administrative burden by taking advantage of income verification by other programs referenced by staff that use the same 200% ceiling. And it comes with a requirement that wasn't mentioned in the resolution but has been reported by staff previously, a requirement that the recipient for the assistance have an energy audit to identify possible efficiency improvements that would really lower energy costs long-term that don't depend on a discount. That will be working with other programs that we'll have in place hopefully very soon to support that sort of investment in low-income households to improve energy efficiency. So I'm thrilled to have this across the finish line here. Thank you very, very much for getting it done. I'm happy to support this.
Council Bloom.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and thank you, Council Kaplan, and all of my colleagues up here. I mean, I feel like it was a really robust and necessary conversation, and there was really consensus around this, and I think that it's important on items around equity and around serving those that struggle in this community that we show that consensus and uniformity in our approach. And I, just as a last bit, appreciate the emphasis on the 1992, and if anything demonstrates that something needs to be updated, it's something that happened a year after I was born.
Council Hanson.
I moved here in 1992, and I was 18. I loved dating myself. Prices for everything are going up, and our city fees are going up to account for that. This council has been kicking the can down the road to catch up on that, and it's going to be evident and painful for some people, and we realize that. And the expansion of this program, if you're already on OHP and you're already on SNAP, your family is, your friends are, tell them what is happening here because we're trying to make Ashland more sustainable fiscally, but also more affordable. And, you know, walking, biking assistance for utility rates and other things that you can take advantage of in Ashland help. So we're doing, we're doing things here, and we're open to more, and we want to do more, but this is something. So tell your friends and your family, I hope it gets utilized. And there are checkpoints here where we're going to look at this program and see whether we need to dial the knobs a little bit, so I'm just grateful that staff has taken this on and made it so concrete and seemingly easy for people to apply. So I wish it the best of luck, and I thank you.
Council Dale.
Thank you, Mayor, yes, and I want to absolutely echo what Council Hanson said. This is something that, appreciate all of the work. I graduated high school in 1992, I probably own the typewriter that that was typed on. But it is, it is very important that we do the work, and as hard as this has been, that's why we pulled one of the items, at least I did, for the water rates that we'll just talk briefly about, and this kind of ties into that, that the work that we're trying to do, there's, we'll speak to it a little bit later, I will, about how we should have done this earlier, but we're trying to do what we can collectively, staff as a community and this council, to give every tool in the toolbox to help the people that need it most. So hopefully all of these click together as best as possible. Council Hanson, thanks for bringing that up. Thank this entire council and staff for really just kind of trying to, something that really needed an update. So I look forward to seeing this passing unanimously. Thank you.
Council Duquesne.
Thank you, Mayor. I was sitting here thinking to myself, I have to share this, we really do agree with each other on occasion, and I, for one, am just really proud of my colleagues too because we talked about this and dissected and took it apart and put it back together and knocked it down again, and we spent many, many minutes and hours on this subject, and I am so happy to support this and see it happen, so thank you.
And I would just add that it's always a good day when you've taken something that started out probably working better than it does now, and we do that hard work to really understand it and to understand what this council and this community wants, and then we shape it so that it actually works not only for our staff, which is a really important element of this, but also to make it easy for the people who need this help to get it. It is very difficult when you're living in that kind of challenge and you have application after application after application put in front of you to get what is relatively small assistance. And so I am really happy that we have made it easier for our residents and simpler for them to understand if they qualify and to take advantage of it. So thank you all for your great work. Roll call, please, Alyssa.
Hanson.
Yes.
Duquesne.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Dale.
Yes.
Great, thank you. We will now return to the two consent agenda items that were pulled. We'll start with C, the contingency draw for fire department. Council Duquesne.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to pull A also, but thank you to my colleague for doing that, and honestly, we had a community member come up and kind of touch base on my question. So my question, honestly, when I look at this, I won't quote him, but, so when I was reading this and I looked at it, my question about this is, and it was touched on earlier, but how much of this result, how much of this cost is the result of the single rollout ambulance service? And what was the income and the expense? How much are we making money? Or, that was touched on earlier, I wanted to see where we are with this right now.
So what is, in front of you is a contingency draw for the fire department primarily not having to do with the EMS at all, it's for the overage that had to do with overtime specifically. And, well, actually, I'm not, I think it was more operations, the overtime, you can speak to the overtime that had occurred, but overtime due to Oregon paid leave and also mandated staffing. So we are requesting $550,000 for the remainder of the year to cover that overage. In addition, there's another $150,000 that Chief Fraser has also identified as a critical need for this fiscal year to cover the replacement of the fire.
Fire station alerting system.
Thank you.
And the alert system.
Yeah.
If I may, really quick.
Yes.
Okay, so that, I hear that, and I know that we're here now, so we have to do something regarding the draw, but my question was, in the overtime and because it was mandated, were there new hires part of that also?
We have always tried to maintain our staffing levels because in the event that we do not maintain our staffing levels due to the mandatory staffing, daily staffing levels, if we do not keep our staff up and keep those positions filled, therefore there creates vacancies and deficiencies on a shift, which in turn, with the CBA and allowing of the staffing, does create overtime. It's a, you know, kind of a catch-22, if, you know, we're not fully staffed, that creates the vacancies, therefore can create the overtime. Vacancy savings, I understand that as well, but we're trying to. So to answer your question, yes, there has been hiring to maintain the staffing levels throughout the last biennium.
What is the staffing level?
The staffing level is 10 per shift, and that is on the dual-role side. On the single-role side, we have eight members, there are teams of two, so we have four teams of the single roles. So when you're talking on the line staff, we have 30 members, three shifts of 10.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, if all of the questions have been answered, then the floor is open for a motion. Council Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 2025-16 that will transfer $700,000 from the general funds contingency line to the fire department's budget.
Council Bloom.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the work you did, you do. It's, you know, this is the reality with, when you have, you know, the paid leave program that we have, which I think is a great valuable program, and obviously we're going to have to adjust going forward in anticipation of that. And, you know, you have mandatory staffing levels for a reason, and I'm confident that they're for safety reasons and to be able to address events that might come up when they do. So thank you for the work and happy to support this motion.
Council Hanson.
Yeah, well said, it's a necessary expenditure. Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Bloom.
Yes.
Dale.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Duquesne.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
We now take up Consent Agenda Item D, Water Rate Resolution Approval of, where are we at? Of 2025-27 Biennium Water Rates. Council Dale.
Thank you, Mayor, yes, and I pulled this, not to drill too much into this, but just to spend a little bit of time conversing. Scott, thank you for coming up here, appreciate the emails. I want to chat a little bit about kind of the work that's been done. The first thing I just want to mention is, as I was thinking about this and just been thinking about it for months, almost years, that we've been working on this, is we really shouldn't be here. This should have been done in 2012, and that's where this started back then, and it's just something, and so I just really want to make at the point again that we are here and we are doing what is best we can, and I don't try not to make excuses and don't want credit, but I wanted to talk a little bit and kind of show, because it can seem like we're just kind of pushing something through, and what I wanted to, Scott, to have you up here, and thanks for waiting through it, is to kind of, to kind of just touch on a few things. And I want to say thank you to staff and a couple of colleagues that we've been able to talk, I mean, we've really worked to try to do the best we can. And so I just want to make sure, if you'll verify here, just kind of the numbers in the spreadsheets that you and I were going back and forth with and for quite some time, is that, is that the, what we did specifically on this one is, from a tier standpoint, we raised the tier, the first tier, from 300 cubic feet to 500 cubic feet. So what that does is we kept the low, we kept the lowest cost tier, we made it so that individuals can have more water at the same low cost. And for fiscal year '26, this first one, that cost raise is a 1.8% increase. And then when you go from 500 to 1,000, it's 9%. And then it goes up for the, you know, we have the premium commodity water, but for those folks that, I mean, water is life, and like we talked about last year, you don't have water in a community, you don't have a community. And so we have to figure this out. And what we're trying to do, this body, this staff, everyone here is trying to figure out, how can we put the pieces together to make this work for everyone as equitably as possible, as best as possible, but being in this position? So Scott, can you just verify that that's what we, that is kind of for this first year what we're trying to do? And also can you speak to, and we raised the customer charge a bit, but we also only raised for this first year, the meter charge only goes up 2.1%, and all kind of works out a little bit, but I just wanted to get this on record of what collectively we're all trying to do here.
Yeah, and we started with the overall baseline of 13.5% revenue captures, kind of your marker, and as we talked about this in the cost of services, what functions capture that total revenue? And one of the policy establishments that the council threw forward was to keep those lower commodity charge tiers as low as possible while raising the three upper tiers specifically in the summer season to capture more revenue. And so you're correct, when you look at the differential in the rate chart that's part of the resolution, those lower tiers have a lower rate increase differential year over year, and the upper commodity charges have a higher percentage rate differential year over year. And so that was trying to follow the council policy in direction to keep that minimum, we use 700 cubic feet as that kind of baseline marker now based on the per capita demand in the community that we've established, to keep that overall water rate as low as possible. The meter charge was configured to follow the M1 manual for the capacity to deliver that water through that size of meter. So a couple of them went up slightly based on the changes in the M1 manual since 2016, and a couple of them went down slightly based on the ability of that meter to deliver that capacity and what it costs for us to manage that capacity for those meters in the system. The customer charge has been the same since, you know, the last resolution that was approved in 2019, and that is your administration overhead burden to actually manage the billing and financial side, HR, legal of the water fund itself in total. And you can see that employee and personnel costs have increased pretty significantly, your insurance costs have increased pretty significantly since 2019, and that's why you see a bigger jump in that customer service charge because that administrative burden has increased more than the meter charge and application of the capacity to the system for meter and delivering the amount of water required for a 3/4-inch meter.
Perfect, thank you.
Any further questions? Floor is open for a motion. Council Dale.
Yep, I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-12, a resolution revising rates for water service pursuant to Ashland Municipal Code Section 14.04.030 and repeal Resolution 2019-10.
Is there a second?
Sorry, I'll second that.
Council Dale.
Thank you, and thanks, Scott, I appreciate that. And that's something that, again, just wanted to say that I appreciate the vigorous discussion that we've had in this community, and we'll continue to listen. We will, as we saw in the previous agenda item, we will use every tool in the toolbox to try to make this to protect our most vulnerable, the people that, and all of us that need it most, and to try to be as equitable and as thoughtful as possible as we move forward through this, so thank you.
Council Bloom.
No, well said by Council Dale. It's not fun, it's never fun to talk about raising rates, but we have a responsibility in a couple of ways. I mean, one, we have to keep up the cost of services, two, we need to provide good, clean drinking water. We need to plan for the future, and I believe that this new water treatment plan helps us do that. And lastly... And lastly, we have to, we have a responsibility to make sure that we're doing so in the most equitable way possible, in terms of the cost that this imposes on community members. And so, I'm really happy that we've kind of gotten through this and found an option that I believe, I think, you know, accomplishes, you know, all of those things that I mentioned. So, thank you, Scott, immensely, and again, another kind of situation, thank you colleagues for kind of kicking this around, trying to figure it out, and, you know, is it going to be perfect? Maybe not, but I think we certainly strive to do the best we can with it, so thank you.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And, yeah, first of all, I also want to add, you know, thanks to staff, to you, Scott, and to your team for your extensive work on this, iterative work, because we went back and asked for more and more scenarios time after time. I'm particularly thankful that you put more of the rate burden on the higher consumption tiers, something we started talking about some time ago, and then this most recent version, extending summer, the summer rate tiers into the spring and fall shoulder months, because we know that we're using more water in those months. That work and staff's recommendation two weeks ago reflect, I think, important community values of incentivizing water conservation and protecting low-income households. That's a major step forward, I believe. In our conversation two weeks, you presented several alternatives along with a recommendation, and I was dismayed, at the result of that meeting, that council directed staff to take a step back from the recommendation on both conservation grounds and on equity grounds. So Counselor Dale just talked about the expansion of the first tier. By raising the volume of the first tier rates by 67% from 300 cubic feet, that's 2,244 gallons, to 500 cubic feet, that's 3,740 gallons, this council, I believe, is throwing out the window Ashland's longstanding policy preference for promoting water conservation by keeping the first tier volume relatively tight. Second, staff's recommended option kept the first tier rates flat for the first year. The council's preferred alternative raises those rates slightly, Counselor Dale talked about 1.8%, I think it was. So our lowest consumption households, typically lower-income households that don't have a yard to irrigate in the summer, pay slightly more in order to drop more of the average household's consumption, actually, not just the average, but every household's consumption. Even the highest-income households in Ashland will now get a lower rate for the additional 200 cubic feet of water every single month if they use that. The dollar amounts aren't really very large either way. They're, we're talking about in, you know, parts, on a monthly basis, a dollar or so, which underlines the question to my mind, why do this? I think this policy decision is not consistent with our stated community values and equity in conservation, so though it pains me, I'm going to vote no on this, like I did last time.
Any further discussion? Counselor Hanson?
Well, that is an enlightening perspective from my Counselor Kaplan, and I think the intention was to design the rates in a more equitable way as a progressive fee. I don't think we nailed it, but that was the intention. I wanted to use my time to just thank staff for the amazing resource that we have delivered to our homes and businesses every day. I'm doing a water taste study, and I think we have the best water in the world. It's not as cold as McCall, Idaho, but it tastes better. And just with this resource in jeopardy and it being a finite resource, I encourage us all to conserve, and now we have the ability to share our water with our neighbors, to sell it to our neighbors. When in need, we can buy additional resources from neighboring communities because of all this great work. I mean, our water system is super complex, and yet it just works for us every day. So I just wanted to give gratitude to staff, and I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody wants clean water. I think I drink more water than anybody I know. However, I wholeheartedly agree with Counselor Kaplan. I cannot support this, even with the analysts, even coming back not once, but twice, three times, the work done on this, I feel is if, I talked enough about the water treatment plant earlier, and when I look at an equitable way to do this, I can't help but go back to the 5% food and beverage tax. That is the equitable way. We did it before, let's do it again. I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Roll call, please, Alyssa? Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
No.
Hanson. Oh, sorry, Kaplan?
No.
Thank you. And thank you, Scott. We are now to the single item we have under new business, the voting and appointment of a new council member. So, thank you, council. As you all have been conducting interviews over the last few weeks, we will be voting tonight to appoint our empty council seat. We will have our city recorder, Alyssa, helping distribute and collect ballots, and our city attorney will help conduct each round, according to what was discussed at the study session last night. And I will be the official recorder on the screen in front of you all.
So just so everyone is aware how this is going to work, it's called the exhaustive ballot measure. The first round is going to be an initial vote. If there, any applicant gets three or more votes, they're immediately going to be appointed. Like Jordan said, the votes are going to be tallied and read aloud by the city recorder, and they'll appear on this spreadsheet here. If no one receives, if no one person receives three votes, we're going to proceed to a candidate elimination, and those kind of vary based on scenarios, so rather than read through those, we'll address them when we come to them here.
And I would just add, so that everyone is aware, that whoever is selected this evening will be sworn in between now and the next meeting, and that we'll have a public swearing in ahead of the first meeting where they're seated.
Correct.
voting for. Great. From Counselor Hanson, we have a vote for Derek Sherrill. From Counselor Dale, we have a vote for Derek Sherrill. From Counselor Kaplan, we have a vote for Meg Wade. From Counselor Duquesne, we have a vote for George Kramer. And from Counselor Bloom, we have a vote for Derek Sherrill. If you can just check your worksheet, the last vote for Derek Sherrill should be up with Counselor Bloom. It's on the same line as Counselor Duquesne's earlier vote. Oh, I apologize. Turns out, don't read and drive at the same time. Thank you for that correction.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, so the floor is, the floor is open for a motion?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Counselor Kaplan?
Well, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm going to improvise. I move.
There it is.
Well, that's it. I moved, it's not, it's very simple. I moved to appoint Derek Sherrill to the city council, to the Ashland City Council.
Second.
So I'll speak to it. I'm thrilled to have Derek join us up here on this, at this table. We've had several engaging conversations. I think Derek brings a really great skill set and set of values to this table. Thank you. I'd be supporting it.
And who seconded it?
I did.
Counselor Duquesne?
Yeah.
Welcome, Derek. See you up here soon. And I would like to say something to all of the people who came forward. I want to tell you that I learned something, honestly, from each and every one of you, and I made notes, and when I'm sitting here, you will hear me echo your words from time to time, and I want to appreciate, I want to tell you how much I appreciate your efforts and keep doing what you're doing, because you're all awesome individuals, you're doing great stuff, and we are going to get to yes and get things done. So I'm very excited, just keep doing what you're doing. Thank you so, so much.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, everybody that applied. I wish we had two or three seats open, because we really have a great pool of applicants. Congratulations, Derek. You have a unique skill set that I think this council is thirsty for right now, as evident in the votes. We haven't been talking to each other about this, so it is, it's interesting to see the win come out like this. You're going to do great, and I look forward to bringing you on board. And again, I, we have seven other partners and allies here in the audience, so thank you, continue doing the good work. If any of you need to go, we've got these awesome people here, so don't feel obligated, just kidding. But no, just really thank you to the community.
Counselor Dale?
Thanks, Mayor, yeah, and a couple of things. You know, it wasn't until Jordan put that grid up on the screen that I got this, these feelings rushing back from sitting here two and a half years ago. It was, it's, yeah, I don't even know what to call it, but I, I think I told a few of you that nothing offends me, except for the one question I get from people, and this is, and it's kind of joking, of course, that, you know, when someone says, I couldn't do what you do, and it's like, yeah, you can. And I really appreciate the eight applicants that came in here and gave everything, and went through the process, the horrible questions that I wrote for folks, and, because they're tough, and those were real questions that I had been asked, and I, you know, I was welcomed to this council. I remember Counselor Kaplan invited me over to his house for scones, and I got to choose, I think it was sweet or savory. And it was just, it was, it was wonderful to just, there will be a steep learning curve, Derek, and I should remind seven other and the rest of this community, too, that in two and a half years, there will be four openings up here. And the only thing that I was disappointed in this process was that there were not more applicants. And that's something that I would say is a call to our community, to get involved, to learn, to jump in and help. That's, I hadn't thought about it until one day I did, and I, it's the best decision I ever made. It is extremely hard, and it is extremely gratifying, and I wouldn't change it for a thing. So welcome, Derek, congratulations, thank you to everyone, and look forward to doing good work with you.
Counselor Bloom?
Thank you, yeah, and congratulations, Derek, and I, you know, really want to speak to everybody, everybody else. I mean, I can't speak highly enough, every single person that I met with are outstanding, and I encourage you, please, please do not be discouraged of this, please stay involved. If you're not on a committee, join a committee. If you're on a committee, join a second committee. Your voices are so desperately needed, and we need to hear them. It's not always an easy job, being a city counselor, but it is one of the most gratifying things that I've ever done in my life. And you're going to be coming up here, Derek, and hopefully some of the rest of you in the future, joining a group of people that are incredible and supportive and smart and keep you on your toes. And, you know, to that point, I'm really glad that it happened in the first round, because Counselor Kaplan had me nervous in our back and forth about the voting method, and I was like, I feel confident about this, but Counselor Kaplan is right 99.9% of the time, and so I had a, I'm just glad that it went smoothly. So thank you, everyone that applied and was willing to meet with me. And, yeah, on to the, on to the next meeting, I suppose.
And I would just add that I know what it is to sit in that chair. I put my hat in the ring for two appointments and didn't get either one of them. And it's actually harder than running a campaign, because when you run a campaign, you can actually put yourself out in front of a much larger group of people, and you can have more time to share what your vision is of Ashland with the broader, the broader public. So I would just encourage, like my colleagues have done, for everyone to stay involved. Thank you for putting your hats in the ring. I talk to mayors who are having trouble getting anyone to serve on their council, and when they have vacancies, they sometimes sit empty for a while, and I'm so grateful that we have a community that I don't see that ever happening in. So, thank you, and Derek, welcome.
Roll call, please, Alyssa? Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
And now we are to city manager report.
No major updates from me, but I'm happy to take any questions council might have.
All right. Counselor Duquesne, did you want to mention the events?
Yes, this is June, and other than being Pride Month, I had to throw that in there, this is June, and we will be celebrating Juneteenth in Jackson County and in Ashland. On June the 10th, SOU is going to raise the Juneteenth flag, and that's going to be on June 10th at 11:00 a.m. in front of Churchill Hall. And then on June 21st, that's a Saturday, BASE is going to celebrate Juneteenth with booths and music and food at Bear, I'm sorry, at Pear Blossom Park. And then on the 22nd of June, in Railroad Park, there will be an unveiling of art done by Mica Blacklight and cast by Jack Langford, and it's going to have a beautiful quote from Playwright, and her name is Lorraine Hansberry, and this is part of the Playwright Walk, and it's going to be right there in Rail, right before you walk into Railroad Park. And I, for one, am just so proud of Ashland Public Arts Committee, so, SURE, Social Equity and Racial Justice Committee, that I get a chance to be liaisons for both of these committees, and they are doing epic work, and I am so proud of them, and this is much needed. So I am looking forward to it. I hope to see all of you there, if you can get there. It's going to be a day of gratitude, joy, and celebration, so.
June 22nd.
June 22nd, Railroad Park at 2:00. Thank you.
Right, any other business from council members, reports from council liaisons? Counselor Dale?
Just a real quick, airport day to Saturday, so fun stuff, kids, science works. Chief Fraser, thank you for having your staff out there. Just a lot of fun, it was outstanding last year. I know it's a busy weekend for a lot of people. We had 1,000 people out there, so really appreciate it, should be great weather.
Okay. And I was able to take a tour of the Jackson County Jail with a variety of people who are working on social services and community issues related to that with Senator Wyden when he was in town about a week ago, and there are some very interesting programs that they have managed to put in place at the jail to help people who find themselves there, in spite of the difficult nature of the facility and the fact that it was never designed to provide any sort of services. So I, that conversation is starting back up again in terms of how do we, how do we step forward in dealing with that wide variety of issues that are all interrelated? And so there'll be more, more on that later, but just wanted to let everyone know that the Public Safety Coordinating Council work is going forward, and then also-
the Public Safety Coordinating Council work is going forward, and then also these other conversations with social services. And if there are no other updates, then the floor is open for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.